Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council's meeting notice dated October 1st, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Barton?
Present.
President Fox?
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now I'd like to have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the fact
of the United States of America
and to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, could you read the the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
Yes. A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also streaming live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated October 1st, 2020, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. The City Clerk's Office also provided through public notice instructions on how the public could submit a question or comment via email or regular first-class mail in advance of this meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specific times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature, and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. And lastly, we ask that all participants remain unmute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of September 22nd?
Aloud.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Fox. I'm a little bit long because I want to give a quick report about a meeting that I attended last week with Councilman Naidoo with certain representatives of JCPN. We met with the President of JCPN, Jim Felkut, our Regional Manager, Carol Bianchi, her boss, John Anderson, and mayors of many of the other 24 towns which Ms. Bianchi serves. We listened to some of the improvements that JCPN is looking into post-Tropical Storm ICS. We also shared our concerns about the service Summit received from JCPN and offered our suggestions for improvement. JCPN and the mayors of Union County, representatives of the governing bodies, and OEM coordinators are meeting with the Union County OEM on October 13th to further discuss changes that need to be made. It is important to keep in mind that the Board of Public Utilities is a crucial part of this process as they must review and approve of JCPN's plans. So, some of the expected improvements are as follows. First, enhancing customer communications. JCPN is utilizing a number of tools, including customer surveys and benchmarking with other companies such as Duke Power and Light, to construct an optimal response for customers. Currently, JCPN is required by the BPU to provide a global ETR within 48 hours of a storm event hitting our territory. More accurate ETRs are provided when crews are assigned to an outage order. They are working on a process to assign more specific ETRs earlier in the process. Their survey responses made it crystal clear from residents that the vast majority want information every two hours, even if it is not ultimately accurate. The use of certain customer channels, for instance, social media, may be utilized to a greater extent for more timely information. The callback and text-back technology used to help identify customers who remain out of service is an important element of the restoration process, but it is one that is pretty outdated. Their smart meters will be installed in time because they finally got approval to plan their to propose their plans to the BPU back in August. Once those smart meters are in place, it will be much easier for the JCPN to know where the outages are and for people to get information from JCPN. However, that is at least three years down the road. So, what they do in the interim in terms of improving communications is critical. Another aspect is modernizing and strengthening the transmission system. The Tropical Storm caused significant sub-transmission system damage. Examples of work that they're doing include rebuilding older lines and equipment to make facilities more resilient while reducing future maintenance costs and expanding network communications. They're working on digital analytics and cyber and physical security to harden the system. This will be in addition to the upgrades JCPN continues to make annually based on review of circuit performance and enhanced reliability. They are pretty much doubling the amount they spend annually in infrastructure work, starting in 2021. JCPN is evaluating the process for road openings and critical facilities. They understand that a better, more efficient system is required, and we are committed to working with them. They are reviewing and fine-tuning the priority restoration process for storm events through meetings with the county and local OEMs and officials. Every town is different, and a one-sized, fits-all approach is not effective. JCPN is prepared to work with municipalities to prioritize restoration. However, exactly how we will do that has not yet been decided. This is complicated, and we are making progress, but this takes time. JCPN supplies power to approximately 250 towns in New Jersey, and Carol Bianchi, our rep, is responsible for 24 towns spread over four counties. I suggested to the JCPN president that they retain a crisis management team to quickly augment the work of the area managers in the event of a major outage event. He said it was one of the things they are looking at. I believe they are working to address the inadequacies we experienced during the last storm, which was the most damaging since Superstorm Sandy. So, we are continuing to work with them, to push them, and I believe we will make progress. Now to some more local things. The Department of Community Programs is hosting some socially-distanced Halloween activities that are listed on its website at summitcommunityprograms.com. To kick things off this weekend, the Haunted Hike at Martinsburg Park is happening on Friday, October 9th at 6:00 p.m. for a less scary hike for younger children, and at 7:00 p.m. for a scarier hike for older kids. Check the website for information on the Halloween parade and movie on the Village Green. The Summit Police Department is developing tips for trick-or-treating based on guidance from the state of New Jersey that was received yesterday. That information will be shared either later this week or early next week. There have been 11 new positive cases confirmed of the COVID-19 coronavirus in Summit in the past four days. We had 18 altogether in September, and we're up to 11 by October 5th. There was one death of a 102-year-old woman with serious pre-existing conditions. Almost all of the new cases are among middle-aged adults and have resulted from unmasked visitors being in their homes. This has been an extremely long and exhausting seven months, but please continue to be vigilant. Please wear a mask and maintain a safe social distance of at least six feet. Vote by mail. Every active registered voter in New Jersey will receive a mail-in ballot for the November 3rd general election. I received and returned mine to the secure ballot drop box in the Chestnut Street parking lot on Broad Street near the firehouse. Ballots can also be returned by mail to the county clerk on or before November 3rd, and Nicole Dorado will be providing more information on this tonight. Union County Clerk Joanne Rajapi created a brief video on how to complete the mail-in ballot and options to return it securely to the Board of Elections. The video is available on the city website. Summit City Clerk Rosemary Lickertis and I held a voting question-and-answer session on Facebook that is posted on the City of Summit YouTube channel. We fielded questions from the community on all aspects of voting in the November 3rd general election. It's important to vote, and I know this is confusing this year because of the vote by mail, and there are ways that you can actually vote in person. So, if you have any questions or are uncertain about your voting options, please feel free to contact the Office of the City Clerk at 908-273-6400. That's 908-273-6400. They are available to help you and answer your questions on Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. Thank you, Council President, and everyone for the time, and I am finished.
Sorry about that. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, and now on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President. So, the city anticipates it will begin the milling and paving of the entire length of Elm Place on Wednesday, October 7th, and Thursday, October 8th, weather permitting, of course. The road will be accessible to emergency vehicles if needed. Residents were notified last week that access to driveways must be limited at times. Police officers will be on-site to assist with traffic control. Curbside leaf collection has begun, unscheduled household garbage collection days and will continue through Friday, December 4th, or the first major snowfall. Please place leaves, and only leaves, no twigs or branches, in brown paper biodegradable pet bags and place curbside. And please refrain from raking or blowing leaves into piles in the street. The Summit Police Department and PBA Local 55 are requesting city residents to stuff the truck with much-needed food and supplies for victims of Hurricane Laura in Louisiana. Please drop off items at the YMCA at 67 Maple Street or the UPS store on 55 Union Place during business hours now through Saturday, October 17th. And then on Saturday, the 17th, members of the Summit Police Department will be at Summit High School collecting donated supplies from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Please help if you can. And then finally, in celebration of National Fire Prevention Week, the Summit Fire Department has created a video for students to learn about kitchen and cooking safety that actually began on October 4th. You can find the video on the City of Summit YouTube channel or on its web homepage at cityofsummit.org. And that is all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Rogers. And now on to the Council President's report. So, I would like to begin by asking Councilmember O'Sullivan to take a few moments and share a statement that he prepared this evening in response to a divisive tweet that he posted a little over two weeks ago. Before he reads it, I would like to emphasize the deep commitment of all members of Common Council, regardless of political affiliation to this community. We work together every day on behalf of all citizens to govern fairly and effectively. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. About two weeks ago, I posted a comment on my personal Twitter account that was influenced by the political climate on the national level in the current presidential race. I don't think anyone who knows me is surprised by my sharp interest in our presidential race. However, I know many interpreted my post as a harsh judgment on all members of the Republican Party, and in reading it later, I realized that is exactly how it read. I deeply regret the implications of that post, and I apologize. Over the course of these days, I have had meaningful and sincere conversations with people from all over Summit. I am thankful to everyone who took time to share their thoughts and their feelings with me and who helped who helped to increase my growth and my understanding. It is a hard lesson to learn how one tweet can be so hurtful. I ran for council to be a unifying voice and to bring people together on the issues that matter to all of us. Whether it is my committee work as Chair of Community Programs and Parking Services, my work on the Admin Committee, or as Council Liaison to Recycling Advisory, Technology Advisory, Community Programs Advisory, or on the newly-formed Ad-Hoc Committee to deal with JCPN, all of my work is singularly focused on what is best for the City of Summit and all of its citizens. As always, I appreciate an ongoing dialogue with anyone in Summit and would welcome a one-on-one conversation at any time. My contact information can be found on the city website on the Common Council page. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan. And now just a few more items from the Council President's report. So, first of all, the first Summit Free Market event in the new building donated by the Summit Conservancy will be held on Saturdays, October 10th and 17th. And it's very, very exciting that we finally have our free market building. And thank you to all the folks who worked long and hard to make this happen. These two events on October 10th and October 17th are by appointment only. You can sign up for a 30-minute time slot on the city website homepage at cityofsummit.org. Masks are required, and temperatures will be taken for all people entering the building. A grand opening ribbon cutting will be held on Friday, October 9th at 4:00 p.m. Members of the public are welcome. If you are a Summit resident and would rather share items remotely online, visit the Virtual Summit Free Market Facebook page. It is a student-run page where people can share yard sale quality items for free. Community volunteers are needed to serve on several City of Summit Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, October 15th. Visit the City Clerk's page at cityofsummit.org for more information. And I just would like to put in a plug here because volunteers are what make this city run. All of the elected officials sitting up here tonight are all volunteers, and all the people who run our boards and commissions and the Board of Education are all volunteers, and we rely on all of you to step forward and and help keeping our city as great as it is. And last of all, auto thefts in Summit. So far this year, more than 25 vehicles have been stolen in Summit. All of them have had a key fob or a valet key inside an unlocked vehicle. While Summit Police Officers routinely patrol 80 miles of Summit roadways and keep watch for the safety of more than 6,000 residential properties and area businesses, they need your help in further deterring auto theft by criminals. Please do not leave cars unlocked or keys inside cars when unattended. Security footage provided by homeowners clearly shows actors checking door handles of vehicles for unlocked car doors as they move from house to house. Do not make your block an easy target. Never leave valuables in cars and keep garage door openers out of sight. If valuables must be kept in your vehicle when it's unattended, lock them in the trunk. Following these simple steps will eliminate automobile thefts in Summit. Please do your part. And finally, well, actually, a couple more. Flu shot clinics. So, protection against seasonal flu is more important than ever due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Union County has scheduled a free flu shot clinic at the Summit Community Center on November 5th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The goal of the free flu shot drive is to ensure that every Union County resident age four and older can get a flu shot this year, even if they don't have health insurance. And finally, plastic bag restrictions. Three ordinances restricting the use of single-use plastic bags by businesses in Summit will go into effect on January 1st, 2020. The first ordinance prohibits the use of single-use plastic bags by businesses at the point of purchase. The second ordinance is a ban on polystyrene, commonly known as Styrofoam, food containers. And the third ordinance limits businesses to provide plastic straws to customers by request only. The City of Summit Common Council passed these ordinances on November 18th, 2019, after hosting two community workshops to obtain input from the business and residential communities. The enforcement of these three ordinances was scheduled to begin May 1st, 2020, but was postponed for six months due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the state legislature has just passed similar restrictions that go even further and also eliminate paper bags, and that those that is awaiting the governor's signature right now, I believe. And that's going to go into effect in about 18 months. So, this is a start as we start working on getting businesses in the next few months ready to comply, starting in January, and there will be educational efforts forthcoming. So, that does it for my report, and now we're moving on. We have a proclamation, mayoral proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Mayor Radus?
Thank you, Council President. Were we in City Hall, I would ask Joe Moschello and Don Nelson to join me at the podium, but as we're not, gentlemen, on behalf, please accept this on behalf of the entire Fire Department. Whereas the City of Summit, New Jersey, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Summit, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 173,200 annually between 2013 and 2017. And whereas two of every five fires, no, excuse me, whereas whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas Summit's residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stovetop, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from the stove tops. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Summit's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Summit's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote, "Serve up fire safety in the kitchen," close quote, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, Nora Radus, Mayor of Summit, do hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. And I urge all the people of Summit to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Summit's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2020. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this sixth day of October in the year 2020. And I want to thank the Fire Department. I know you have worked with our Communications Department to create a video and to do lots of other things through working with the schools to educate during Fire Prevention Week in the month of October. So, I'm very grateful to you and to all of your fellow firefighters. Is there anything either of you would like to share?
Sure. Mayor Radus, I'll start off. Thank you very much for the proclamation, and Council, thank you too for your support. Just real quick, October 8th, 1871, was the Great Chicago Fire. 149 years ago, so think of the conditions in Chicago back then. A rumor has it that Mrs. O'Leary's cow kicked over a lantern and started the Great Chicago Fire. Luckily, we don't have those conditions around here much anymore. But after that fire, that's when I started thinking about how can we prevent fires? That's really when fire prevention started. Now, fast forward to 2020. You know, all those years in between, we were going out to schools and giving presentations and things like that, but now in 2020, because of what's going on, we can't do that. So, I will defer to Lieutenant Moschello, who will speak about what we're doing this year for Fire Prevention Week slash month. So, Joe, take it away.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
All right. First of all, thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation. So, yeah, like Deputy Chief Nelson was saying, that we've had to adapt like everybody else and come up with a virtual platform to deliver this year's public fire safety education. We'd like to obviously thank the city's Public Information Officer, Amy Carrench, for really assisting us in adapting and learning through the technology on how to deliver that. We have a video that we produced with our very own firefighter, Thomas Penn, that we partnered up with the Summit Board of Education, and through the city's YouTube channel, we've been able to deliver that message. We're also coordinating virtual drive-bys of the various schools during their mask breaks to try and reinforce the message and in a non-contact format. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work and creative ways to get the message out to our children and families.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. And now we're on to presentations. This evening, we have with us Nicole Dorado, who is the Elections Administrator for the Union County Board of Elections, and she's going to do a presentation about the vote-by-mail process and answer any questions from members of the council and also for the public. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I hope everyone is doing well and your families are well. My name is Nicole Dorado. I'm the Administrator at the Union County Board of Elections, and I just wanted to talk to you and your audience this evening about the changes that you can expect this year for the November 3rd Presidential General Election. And of course, all of these changes are due to COVID. So, we'll start off, well, with not a change, okay? The voter registration deadline is November 13th. I'm sorry. The registration deadline is October 13th. It's this coming up Tuesday. Rosie's shaking her head. Thanks, Rosie. Call the municipal clerk's office if you have any questions. But two ways to register online. You can register online. You can also download the form from our website, Our forms are there. If you fold it properly, postage is prepaid. Again, the deadline to register to vote for the upcoming general election is this coming Tuesday. So, voters have less than six days. They could bring their voter registration form to the municipal building. They could bring it to our office, or they can drop it in the mail. So, switching gears in terms of the changes that we will see, as the mayor mentioned, every active registered voter will automatically receive a vote-by-mail ballot in this year's election. So far, 327,000 vote-by-mail ballots have been mailed countywide. As of today, we received 36,338 vote-by-mail ballots back. Of that, 1,141 have been from Summit residents. And of those that we received from Summit residents, 964 have been received from the ballot drop box. So, Mayor, we received your ballot. Thank you very much. But, and countywide, more than the majority of the vote-by-mail ballots that we are receiving back so far are coming in from the drop boxes. So, how can you return your ballot to our office? Please consider using a drop box. There are 22 countywide. So, that's one in every town, plus we placed one outside of our office in Elizabeth, so Elizabeth happens to have two. You can return your ballot in person, either to my office in Elizabeth, the county clerk's office in Elizabeth, or the county clerk's office in Westfield. If you choose to return your ballot in person, you have to produce a vote-by-mail, a driver's license with your current voting address on it, or a new Or a New Jersey-issued identification card. Um, you can, for the first time this year, bring your voted ballot to your polling location. So voters can now go to their designated polling location. They stand in line, they will sign a logbook, and the poll worker will deposit their vote-by-mail ballot into a secure transfer bag, which will come back to our office at the end of the night um with the rest of the um election materials from the day. Of course, voters can still uh drop their vote-by-mail ballot in the mail. All ballots postmarked on or before Election Day and received in our office by November tenth will be counted so long as they have a postmark on or before Election Day. And finally, a vote-by-mail uh ballot voter can ask a friend to deliver their ballot to our office. So that's called a bearer ballot, and um a bearer can deliver three vote-by-mail ballots in addition to their own. They have to show ID when they get here. And um, so if you have somebody in your community who is homebound, you know, you can have somebody offer uh you can offer to bring their vote-by-mail ballot um to our office for them. Um, candidates cannot touch ballots, so candidates cannot make that offer uh to their neighbors. So what should you expect should you opt to go to the polls on Election Day? First, polling locations are consolidated pursuant to the executive order. Um, there is, we're required to have fifty percent of um the polling locations that we would typically have. Uh, but we did add more than we had in the primary election um in an effort to um kind of combat what we expect in terms of crowding. But any voter who goes there and uh is expecting to vote on the machine, you will be provided with a a paper provisional ballot. Okay, so the ADA compliant machines are reserved for voters who have disabilities and whose disabilities preclude them from voting on a piece of paper. So, for example, um, a blind voter would be able to use the voting machine and vote. They'd be provided with the um assistive device, hearing device, and the machine would read the ballot to them and walk them through marking their ballot. If a voter, for example, has Parkinson's, or perhaps they suffered a stroke, and um you know, their dexterity is diminished to the point where they can't fill out um the circle uh next to the candidate's uh name they wish to vote for, then that is somebody who would be permitted to use um the voting machine. All other folks will be offered a provisional ballot. So essentially, your options are to um vote on a piece of paper in your kitchen with a cup of coffee, or to vote on a piece of paper after waiting on a long line on Election Day. Um, results. So we talked about uh the vote-by-mail ballots being count uh being received through November tenth. So nobody should expect results um on Election Night, certainly not anything meaningful in terms of um the outcome of any election. Certainly, um I mean, we're we're pursuant to the uh legislation that was recently passed. We can start counting, prepping, opening vote-by-mail ballots ten days before Election Day. Um, but we will not start counting until uh October thirtieth. We're going to start opening and prepping on October twenty-fourth. That is by far the most time-consuming um and labor-intensive part of the process. And then we will start counting on October thirtieth. But considering we will be accepting ballots by mail through November tenth, and once all of those ballots come in, we have to reconcile against the provisional ballots to ensure that nobody votes twice. And then also new this year is on the ballot cure law. So voters who uh will be afforded the opportunity to cure a signature deficiency um have until November eighteenth at twelve o'clock to do so. So what does that mean? Um, a voter may forget to sign the certificate on the certificate envelope of their ballot. Or um just over time, our signature changes, and it may not look like it looked thirty years ago when we registered to vote. So voters who either forgot to sign or whose signatures changed will receive a letter from our office asking them to cure their ballot or signature deficiency. And they have until November eighteenth to return that certification to us. Um, they could do it by fax, by mail. We provide an envelope. Um, by email, we've established a dedicated email address for that purpose. Um, but now we're looking at the deadline for these ballot cure letters is November eighteenth at twelve o'clock. So we'll finish counting on the nineteenth, and um by November twentieth, by law, we have to certify um the general election for Union County. So um, that is this general election in a nutshell. And I understand um that people are are not happy. You know, we are getting a lot of phone calls in the office. And, you know, I totally understand. I take my children to vote. I think it's an important part of our culture and an important part of what we do as a community. But all of these changes are due to COVID-nineteen. So if we can find a safer way to vote and still make our voices heard, nobody's constitutional right to vote is being taken away. You're just being asked to vote differently this year. Um, as with everything else we're doing this year. So um, you know, I I hope that next year we are back to um a little more normalcy. Um, but in the meantime, you know, we're expecting and prepared for over two hundred thousand vote-by-mail ballots. So please send them in. The sooner the better.
Okay. Thank you so much for that presentation. Um, I'm gonna now open it up for questions, but I actually had a couple for you. Uh, first of all, if someone is not sure about what their signature looks like, is there I've I've heard you can include like a photocopy of your signature in your ba- in your actual ballot. Is that correct?
Um, you can include a copy if your ID, if you're concerned, so it would have to have um uh like your driver's license number and and your signature on it. Um, that's what's required on the ballot cure. But for residents who are concerned about, I tell them to fill out a voter registration form. Um, box number one on the voter registration form asks the reason why you're submitting this form, and a signature update is one of those reasons. So um it could be as simple as submitting a voter registration form, fill it out, select update signature, and we'll make sure that that's updated um in the system.
And it's still timely to do that if you do that now?
Yes.
Okay, great. And my other question was, you said active voters. What is an active voter? And does that include someone who maybe just turned eighteen and registered, for example?
So um the pending seventeen voters will uh they've been processed, and they will be registered to vote um on their birthday. So they are in a pending status. An inactive voter is, for example, if our office mails a a piece of election mail and it gets returned to us, whether the label says um unable to forward or no longer lives here. But anytime a piece of official election mail is returned to our office, we put you in an inactive status because that implies that perhaps you no longer live at that address. So um, that's the first round that went out was active reg- in active registered voters, which means those put in into an inactive status um will not receive a ballot. Additionally, voters who have not voted in two federal election cycles are put into an inactive status by the state. That's just part of the uh the state statutes to continue to maintain uh the voter rolls as best we can.
What is a federal, what is considered a federal election cycle?
Every eight years. Even though we elect Congress every two years, it's every two, if if you haven't voted after eight years um to presidential elections.
But if you're newly registered within that eight-year timeframe, you still will get a ballot then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying those. Does it? Go ahead.
I was I was just going to say, if you, if anybody has any questions relative to their um their voter status, they should, certainly they can call our office and we'd be very happy to check that for you. You can also go to njelections.org, the New Jersey Elections um voter portal is awesome. You can check your voter registration. You can track your ballot from the time that it's mailed to your office, and then once it gets received back into our system. Um, it doesn't track it through the postal system, but it will let you know when we received your ballot.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Uh, Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. Um, thank you, Nicole, for that presentation. So I have um two quick questions. One, um, I have one of those um seventeen-year-olds who's about to turn eighteen. So will he receive um a mail? Will he receive a ballot in the mail, or should he vote provisionally? What, will he receive one?
When is his birthday?
Eighteenth, um, October seventeenth.
He should receive a ballot. If he does not receive, yes, if he does not receive a ballot, he should absolutely go to the polls.
Great, fabulous. And the second is that I've had a lot of questions from um our seniors in town, um especially from our senior set center, um which is usually one of the polling locations. And I want to say that your website, Union County Votes, um all the materials that you've been putting out have been fabulous. The New Jersey website has been great, and so I really want to commend you on putting out all those materials. Joanne's done some videos that are great. But I have a lot of these seniors who really don't have access to the internet and access to all those resources. Is anywhere I can go and um get a flyer for them or or like a printed graphic that I can distribute to some of those senior residents to explain both how to fill out the mail-in ballot and what the process is this year? Because there's a lot of confusion among that population.
So all of that information in terms of how to successfully complete their vote-by-mail ballot and how to return it is enclosed in the vote-by-mail ballot package. So there's a tri-fold um flyer that Ms. Raja P has prepared and included in the um in the ballot envelope act itself. And I've enclosed um a little flyer about where the drop boxes are and how to return it to our office. So um, but the the flyer was as up-to-date as drop boxes were installed at the time um the summit packages were put together. So they can always call our office. And anybody who has any questions, our staff is so happy to just walk them through the process. You know, this is where you write your name. A municipality is your town. You have to absolutely sign it. You know, voters have to make their mark or or apply their signature. Um, even if they do receive assistance from um a loved one, a friend, or a caregiver.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, are there any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President, uh, and thank you, Nicole. Uh, this was a great presentation. Um, so I have a couple of questions. So if someone believes that they should have received a ballot, um but they haven't yet, when should they, when should they be calling the office to check?
Call now. No, no time late for the present. Um, it is the county's clerk's office that mails out the ballots. So that number is nine oh eight, five two seven, four nine nine six. Um, and they will certainly be able to assist and let you know. Um, summit ballots were mailed on September twenty-ninth. So the county clerk is asking that you at least give the post office about a week for it to get to you before you start panicking, wondering where your ballot is.
Okay, um, and then my second question is, uh, how often are ballots picked up from the drop box?
Every day. Thank you for asking that question. I'm sorry I didn't mention it. We pick up those ballots every day. Um, we send a bipartisan team out between two to four of my employees um are on the road. We start our pickups at six AM. Um, they are under twenty-four-seven camera surveillance. Um, yours is clearly in a great location. We are getting tremendous volume out of that drop box. So um, thank you, Rosie, for your help in um finding a location. Um, it was uh, it's, they have all been very popular. Like I said, more than half of our ballots that are being returned are coming from the drop boxes.
Thank you. That that's great. Um, and then the third question I have is, um my understanding is that people can track their ballot. Um, can you just talk about how people can do that?
So if a voter is interested in tracking their ballot, they would go to njelections.org and click on the New Jersey Voter Information Portal. Um, the ability to track their ballot would require um them to sign up for the for uh the website. They have to register for the website. And the the information that's tracked is the date that it leaves the county clerk's office and the date that we receive it into the state voter registration system in our office. It does not track it through the postal system.
Okay, and then
Then, post-Election Day, um, once we reconcile the election, voters will be able to check to make sure their vote was counted.
That was my follow-up. Thank you. That's awesome. And thank you again for all of the work uh that you've put in. This is incredibly organized. Thank you.
So, uh, Madam Clerk, I see you have a question or something to add?
Yes, I just want to ask Nicole if you could just stress the importance of inside that uh mail-in ballot, there's that flap, that infamous flap. And I I don't think we can stress how important it is to not detach it when you're sending it back. Could you just reinforce that, please?
Yes, so the certificate, on the certificate envelope, which is the little envelope that you put your ballot into, is how we confirm that you are who you are, who you are presenting yourself to be. Um, we use that signature on that certificate envelope as a first line against fraud to make sure that it is you who has signed and voted and completed that ballot and sent it back to us. Um, it is not your receipt for voting. If that is not returned back to us, we cannot count your vote. We don't know who you are. Um, you don't get credit for the election. Um, do not sign your ballot. That's important, too. Do not sign your ballot. But the um that certificate has to stay on. Now, I know that some folks are concerned about uh maintaining anonymity in the vote-by-mail process. When we are prepping the ballots um to be tallied, we remove the certificate. The certificate goes one way, the ballot goes another. You can never match the two again once they're removed. Um, and that process starts after, uh, actually, it starts this Saturday, so we have public inspection periods of the ballots. And after each public inspection period, we move the ballots to our tallying center, and we start stripping them of the certificates. So by the time we even get to opening ballots, there will be no way whatsoever to match you with your ballot. So um, I I appreciate that question, Rosie, because some folks are concerned about maintaining anonymity in the vote-by-mail process. Thank you, Nicole.
Okay, were there any other questions? Uh, someone else had their hand up. Uh, Councilmember and I do.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Nicole. Excellent presentation. I actually put in my mail-in ballot today. And uh, I will say it was somewhat nerve-wracking, because I've always gone, well, except for the primary, to go and uh to vote in person. And so it took me four different times to read the instructions, but the instructions are very clear, and I agree. Picked out a black pen to make sure, filled in those ovals, put it inside the certificate envelope, put that inside the regular envelope, took it over, and it's the Chestnut Street Lot, which, if folks don't know where it is, it is right next to the fire station. It's the lot right next to the fire station. And if you even don't know where that is, if you're going on Morris Avenue, the police have a big sign up there that says, "Vote by mail, here at Chestnut Lot." And so you just drive in, you can park your car, drop off your ballot, and walk away. When we were there, multiple people came and did that. So thank you for setting it up, uh, and and I think it's very good. But it is a little nerve-wracking for folks. I I'll say for myself, it certainly was. It's not the usual way of doing it, but follow the instructions carefully, and it's very easy to do. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor?
I just want to say that um, first of all, Nicole, thank you very much for this very clear presentation. It was great. Um, uh, the Communications Office has created some signs, which we're going to put up, not too large signs, but signs also pointing to the direction of the of the mail, of the ballot box. And it's, yeah, you're right, the Chestnut Street Lot is right next to Memorial Hall, which is that secondary church, if you will, across the street from St. Teresa's. So it's it's and and the and the ballot box is um has a twenty-four-seven surveillance camera uh on the box to to prohibit any kind of tampering. So um So, yeah, so, and it'll go at a 1,300 and some 900 already at the ballot box. So, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? I had one more. The bearer, when you're taking, if you take a family member's ballot to the drop box, for example, do you need to fill out that bearer portion of the form for the drop box as well?
Yes, you do. Anytime you are delivering a ballot to be returned to our office, you are considered a bearer. And that portion needs to be completed in front of the voter. So, it's important that's done in front of the voter. And a bearer can bear up to three ballots excluding their own.
Okay. Thank you. So, if there are no more questions from council, I'm going to open it up. If anyone in the public has any questions for Ms. Dorado. Just looking. If you do, okay, we've got a hand raised? Two hands raised, okay. All right. Hal Corley? Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Hal Corley, 45 Woodland Avenue. Quick question about overnight parking with the change in commutation.
Oh, wait. Mr. Corley, I'm going to cut you off. This is questions from Ms. Dorado about this presentation. Public comments next, okay? No, that's all right. No problem. We'll catch you in the next, right after this, okay? Does anyone have any? You're welcome. Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Dorado from the public? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Any other questions from members of council? Oh, wait. Did I see a hand?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Yeah, it kind of went up and down quickly. So, okay, I'm going to take that as a no, and no one else from council, correct? Okay, so with that, I'm going to thank Ms. Dorado for a wonderful presentation. That was really helpful. And we appreciate all the work that your office is doing. I've called several times and they're so, everyone in that office is so helpful. And, you know, you don't usually think of government as being helpful, but, but, you know, we try to make a difference here in Summit, and you guys are doing the same at the Union County. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. Be well, stay safe, and vote early. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Nicole.
We're working on it.
Thank you. Take care. Good night, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Okay, so now, we are on to the long-awaited public comments. And I, just a reminder, members of the public have an opportunity now to comment on any matter that's not on the agenda. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And before you start, please state your name and address. And if you have any written, prepared comments, please provide them to the clerk. You can send them by email to arlicates@cityofsummit.org. So, we'll start with you, Mr. Corley, since you were the first up before. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh, thank you very much. Hal Corley, 45 Woodland Avenue. A very quick question about overnight parking with the changes in commutation with a large percentage of the population working either, or some part-time at home. Would it be possible to either amend current regulations for overnight parking or enact a, either finite or open-ended moratorium on enforcing overnight parking regulations in Summit to enable, to help people to manage new challenges with working at home? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that question, Mr. Corley. I'm going to hand this one over to Councilmember Sullivan as the Chair of the Parking Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Corley. Your timing is pretty good here. We have been discussing in committee certain solutions for people that are working at home that were normally commuting somewhere in their car and their car is on the street all day. We are looking at overnight parking on certain streets. The goal is to keep this simple for residents. And to keep something simple requires a lot of input from a lot of different departments. So, as we are in our initial discussions in committee, we have yet to hear from the Summit Police Department or anybody from, any legal opinions on what we're discussing. So, we're trying to make this move as quickly as possible, but we also have to be careful that we get it right. I would just ask Greg, because Greg has lived this life before where he has been parking on the street at times. So, Greg probably has a lot more thoughts to add to this.
Sure. Through you, Council President. Thank you. Thank you, Danny. I lived in the apartments on New England Ave. for probably three or four years. You know, and I, myself and a number of our neighbors would always be hopeful that we could come to a solution in the city that would provide for on-street parking, some places overnight, on-street parking for the people who are working at home during the day. And I think, you know, certainly, speaking for myself and the neighbors that I know, the, we would certainly be willing to pay the parking fees for that privilege. And it's, I am extremely supportive of us as a council, hopefully, discussing this as a full group soon. But I'm really looking forward to the conversations that we're going to have with our Parking Services Director and Chief of Police and City Administrator. On, I think, Thursday, we're having that conversation. So, I'm extremely supportive of it. I'm thankful for the way that our city staff continue to lead in really innovative ways. And I want to also thank Hal for the question. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. So, moving on, we've got Henry Bassman. Go ahead, Henry. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
I had a question. I lowered my hand. I had a question about the vote-in procedure.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were flickering. Do you want to give it a try? We'll try to see if we can answer it. Maybe, I suspect our Madam Clerk can do this.
I'm sorry. I was flickering because you weren't recognizing me. I was hoping to get your attention. Anyway.
I thought you were taking your hand down. I apologize.
The question is, the presenter said something about you're unsure of your signature. You can copy an identification card and enclose that. Now, where do you put that piece of paper?
Madam Clerk, would you like to take this? You have to unmute.
Henry, I would imagine that you include that with your mail-in ballot, your completed ballot. So that, well, no, don't do that. Excuse me, because that's supposed to be anonymous. You should send it with your voter registration form. I would just fill out a voter registration form, update your signature, and move it on. Don't even, don't even copy the thing. I don't recall what she said about, yes, Mayor?
She said to include it in the exterior envelope so that the signature would be there next to the flap, right? Because it can't go inside the envelope. You're absolutely right. Inside the envelope. But I think, Henry, I think, Henry, obviously, the safest thing to do would be to go to the Union County Voter Elections website and download a registration form and mail it in with, and check off the number-one box that says Signature Update.
I, my circumstance may be unusual, but my signature is never the same twice. I have a bad hand. So, I'm going to put the ID card in the outer envelope. And if there's any questions when they see this certificate, they'll see my military ID and they'll see my driver's license.
Right. And then, if they have a problem, they'll reach out to you.
You know, Henry, the other thing I would suggest is, take a picture of your signature when you send in the update. So then, you have it, you know, just keep it on your phone, and then you'll have it when you need it next time.
Thank you.
Okay. And, Henry, can you also state, for the clerk, can you just state your address?
Oh, surely. Henry Bassman, 18 Hartley Road, Summit, New Jersey.
Great, thank you. Okay. So, moving on, we've got Jim Bennett. Go ahead, Mr. Bennett. Oops, I think I unmuted the wrong person. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, thank you, Council President. And thank you, Mayor Rades, for your report on your recent meeting with JC P&amp;L. And good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I'm Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue in Summit. Since I last appeared before you, I found two advocacy groups who represent the interests of JC P&amp;L customers in Monmouth County. The first is Residents Against Giant Electric, the acronym RAGE. And the second is Consumers Helping Effect Regulation of Gas and Electric with the acronym CHARGE. Both nonprofit groups have common management. RAGE successfully pursued litigation in the Office of Administrative Law against JC P&amp;L concerning a proposal by JC P&amp;L to place transmission lines over a commuter railroad. Rachel Knappka from RAGE informs me of two pieces of information that are germane to last month's Summit Council discussion. First, JC P&amp;L has an incentive, thanks to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, to favor long-distance, high-voltage transmission line projects over local distribution lines. JC P&amp;L is entitled to collect cost plus 10% from ratepayers for transmission line projects, but not for local distribution projects. JC P&amp;L further has an incentive to overstate the cost of projects it does not want to undertake, such as burying local lines. Our friends at RAGE agree. They, too, were told that the cost of burying lines is $1 million per mile. Ms. Knappka says that there is little to no validation of the cost estimates JC P&amp;L throws out there. On August 20th, 2020, I sent Council President Fox information from my German correspondent, Mr. Bohn, about a far lower estimate of $287,000 per mile to $766,000 per mile. Council President shared that information with the Ad Hoc Committee, but on September 22nd, 2020, Councilman Naidoo did not address these figures, reverting instead to the $1 million per mile to now $3 million per mile. The other piece of information Ms. Knappka gave me is that issues with high-voltage transmission lines rarely cause power outages. 99% of power outages, according to Ms. Knappka, are sourced from issues with local distribution lines and substations. While it is clear that underground lines are not a silver bullet, common sense informs us that burying lines and hardening substations would go a long way. Finally, let me address two other comments from Councilman Naidoo to my remarks at the last meeting. Even if it's true that Germany was able to start with a clean slate following the World War II, it's been 75 years since the end of that war. Germany would have to have replaced its entire system at least once. So, why are distribution lines in Germany 80% buried and not here? Councilman Naidoo also remarked that telephone lines would need to be buried as well. That's clear. Having lived in Germany, I can assure you that there are no telephone lines in the air while electric lines are buried underground. If you bury lines, you, of course, do both in one go. So, what am I asking council to do? I want you to be armed with this information when you next meet with Carol Bianchi of JC P&amp;L. Do not accept anything from her in November that falls short of a full accounting of where the failures took place during EIS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Councilmember Naidoo, if you want to respond to any of this, that's, it's up to you.
Not really. I mean, I'm not an expert on German electricity. I have no way of knowing. I take Mr. Bennett's statements as factually accurate. It's his contact and his research to the degree that he's done it. I have no comment. We have to, my only comment is the following. As the mayor said, we were on a call with the president of JC P&amp;L, a couple of other representatives from JC P&amp;L. And it wasn't a, just so it's very clear, it wasn't as if this was, you know, hundreds of other folks. Probably a call with 20 other folks total. So, this was a relatively small group of people who spent more than an hour together going through in detail about what their next steps are. I understand Mr. Bennett's point of being skeptical. I appreciate that point of being skeptical about what folks are saying. We all understand that different folks have different roles, and their intent of giving information is based upon where they sit. So, we're not taking everything someone says as gospel. But that being said, we have to work with the utility that we have in front of us. We have to figure out what they're trying to do, what we can do, and what is practical and achievable in a reasonable period of time. The figures that I quoted are figures that are both in things that I've heard from folks in Chatham who investigated themselves, things that I've seen in the literature, and things that I've heard from JC P&amp;L. I am not going to purport to be an expert in this field. And we have to take information as we get it and evaluate it. We are trying to share information with the public as we get it. But we're not sitting here as folks who are in the power generation, you know, expert role. If we want to do that, if the community wants us to get involved in that kind of work, we should be prepared to hire consultants who do this. It will cost money. And the community must decide if that is an adequate way of spending finite resources. This is not a small thing to simply say, okay, let's look at burying underground lines. Who's going to pay for it? How much will it cost? What kind of evaluations will you want to do in order to do so? That's all going to cost money. And folks who are concerned about their taxes should weigh whether this makes the most sense as the way, as an approach to go, or whether the way we are so far going, which is to have productive, I think, productive dialogue with JC P&amp;L and getting information about what is going on, their timing for what is going on, and trying to put pressure, as the mayor said, on ideas that we have to give them ideas of what they should do, is more preferable than taking your tax dollars and starting to hire a whole bunch of consultants to figure it out. I'm sorry if I'm sounding a little this way with Mr. Bennett's comments, but we cannot, we do not make decisions based upon looking at articles from other countries. That is not a way of making public policy using tax dollars. We have fiduciary responsibility that we have to our taxpayers. I have sat on this council for five years. And I have, long ago, when I first came on, I'm the most senior council member right now. And I remember a time when I got on, and I used to say to people, we need to figure out what our needs are and what our wants are. Can't get everything we want. We have to figure out we are in serious budgetary issues going forward. It's nice that Mr. Bennett is doing all of this research and so forth, but to come and simply say, here, here's the numbers, accept it. That is not the way we go about doing this. It requires diligence and thoughtful planning. And we, and this has to be discussed fully as far as how we want to use finite resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Councilman Naidoo. Mr. Bennett, thank you for your comments. If you've done a, if you have a prepared statement of what you said just now, if you could please send it to the clerk at arlicates@cityofsummit.org. That would be appreciated. And moving on, our next comment is Mimi Zukoff. Go ahead.
Yes, hi. This is Miriam Zukoff, 49 Way Drive in Summit. I wanted to bring to the attention of council that my political signs were stolen, as well as those of many of my neighbors, on Friday night, September 25th. We all reported to the police the next morning when we noticed it. And I'm very, very upset about this. I feel that it was done with malice to try to intimidate me and my neighbors from expressing our constitutional right for freedom of speech. So, that is my statement.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zukoff. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. This is a problem in many years with elections. It's extremely unfortunate because, first of all, it is a disrespectful thing to do. It's also a violation of people's ability to express their political views. And finally, it's actually, it's actually criminal to, you know, it's a crime to trespass and to steal someone's property. So, I would urge that everyone, if you know of people who are doing this, if you know of, you know, of, you know, if you hear about this, that you dissuade people from doing this. I think it's important that we all respect each other. And even if you don't like a candidate... a candidate's sign on something, you know, if you don't support the candidate who your neighbor might have on their sign, that, you know, part of living in a community is respecting other people's viewpoints. So I don't know if anyone has anything else they'd like to add. I don't know if Captain Zagorski, do you have anything to add on this topic?
Uh, I could just add that I, you know, shared your concern and we appreciate, again, the concern you have regarding this, especially in the present political climate. We do take it serious as well. We have followed up on it, and today we haven't developed any information that would indicate that it was like a coordinated effort, targeted at any specific candidate. But like in my 30 years of experience, you know, this is something that we deal with, you know, especially during the national elections. And, you know, for the most part, though, it turns out to be like teenagers are taking these signs. Again, you know, we keep an open mind and we want to make sure that, again, that people aren't being, you know, candidates aren't being targeted, and that people's rights aren't being violated. But again, our experience shows that, you know, mostly teenagers that do this.
Thank you, Captain Zagorski. Amy Herhold, would you go, like to go ahead, Ms. Herhold?
I guess, Amy Herhold, 33 Wade. So I'm one of the other neighbors that was just mentioned on Wade Drive. So I just wanted to echo Mimi's comments. So I had signs stolen at the same night, you know, two political signs. So made a police report when I discovered it in the morning. And I just, you know, want to echo her comments that it was, you know, it's not, of course, it's not like having a, a, you know, major item like a car stolen, but it is, you know, it is a frustrating act that makes you feel like somebody is trying to intimidate you. And I just wanted to point out, I had another lawn sign that was not a political sign, that was not stolen, that, you know, I had a say their names sign. And so, you know, clearly it was, they were going after certain political signs, or they were going after political signs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herhold. And I would also urge, if, if in fact these are teenagers doing this, all those folks out there who have teenagers, please reinforce with them that it's important for us to all respect other people's property, other people's political signs, and with, oh, Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to take a slightly different view than what I'm hearing, which is that this seems to happen all the time in election years and that these are teenagers. To me, that both of those facts are irrelevant, frankly. The essence of a democracy is that people get a right to express themselves. This is a fundamental attack on democracy. That's what this is. In fact, it's worse than stealing a car, in my opinion. You can replace a car, you cannot replace democratic values. This country is built upon the idea that people of different political opinions get to express them freely, without intimidation, without fear, and with the ability to try to persuade people through peaceful means, either through speech, or through voting, or through action, in order to change direction. It is fundamental to who we are. It doesn't matter who the candidate is, whether I agree with that candidate, disagree with that candidate, agree with the people putting up the sign, disagree with the people putting up the sign. It is fundamental to who we are. And it should not be simply lightly taken, and this is not to assume that it is taken lightly, but I'm telling folks, I don't think this is a light thing. I fundamentally disagree with the concept that we should tolerate it in a society that believes in the right of the governed to choose who they allow to govern them. This is who we are, folks. If, when people go around, I don't care if it's a 15-year-old, a 17-year-old, a 55-year-old, or a 65-year-old, they're breaking the law. If we are talking about law and order in a society, the first part of being in a law and order society is to protect people's right to express themselves in a democracy of who their favorite candidate is. Okay, we need to take this seriously. Cars can be replaced. You know, bicycles can be replaced, but the idea that you should feel fear when you express your opinion because somebody decides to vandalize it, because they decide that they have a right to go on your property to show you that your opinion doesn't matter, that they can go ahead and intimidate you, that's fundamentally wrong. And I think we need to take it seriously like it is. Saying it's done every year or done every few years is unacceptable to me.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. So moving on to the next comment, Eileen Kelly, go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodland Avenue. Thank you, Mayor Raddus, for your overview on the JC P and L meeting. And it's good to hear there's some tangible and productive conversations going on. My question was, was there any mention on specifically communication for seniors who, you know, might not have a text and capability or internet, how JC P and L was thinking about communicating differently with that group moving forward? Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President, through you. Thank you, Eileen. You know what, this, we did not get into the specifics of how they were going to address the various, you know, constituencies in the towns. But they do know that it is a problem. And again, we are, this is, that was the first meeting after they had done their internal review, and they had, this was just some of the things that they're thinking of. The next productive meeting, I expect, will be with the OEM in Union County and our coordinators, who will have the ability to give them more specific recommendations about how we can address our seniors. Certainly, the most effective way to reach out to our seniors is by telephone, through swift reach. But I'm, I'm kind of, I try not to do that too often, just even in an outage situation, because whether we like to admit it or not, too many of those phone calls become white noise. And so I really try with, along with Chief Bartolotti and Michael Rogers, to keep those calls to a minimum, to where they are serious. But, but those are, that's one, certainly one way to reach out to seniors. But it is something that we are definitely looking at and going to focus on. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, Doug Kramer, go ahead. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Great. My name's Doug Kramer, K-R-A-M-E-R. I live at 9 Brantwood Drive in Summit. Despite living in Summit for about 20 years, this is the first time I've ever spoken at a council meeting, so forgive me. I do feel compelled to comment on the recent Twitter post by Councilman O'Sullivan. And I was present for your apology, and I do appreciate what you said. But I do want to affirm that you really did hurt a lot of people with your comments. Many people that you may not have reached out to and may not even know. And on behalf of a lot of those people, I just wanted to publicly state that, you know, asserting that Republicans are members of a cult and stupid are just not helpful in our small town. You know, we all love this town. We all live here. We raise our kids here. You know, we require, in my opinion, some level of civility here, and we try to maintain it. And while there are national politics going on at very, very agitated levels, I certainly would hope that we could keep some sort of safe space here in Summit. So I had more poignant things to say tonight, but in light of your apology, I just wanted to state that it was really hurtful, and I know a lot of people are hurting from it. And it's just not helpful. And I would remind everybody in town and on the council that, you know, let's be civil to each other and respect each other's points of view. And I would also ask, and I'm laughing a little bit, to ask Mayor Raddus to affirm that, you know, Republicans are valued and welcome in Summit. With that, I'll thank you.
Mr. Kramer, I appreciate your viewpoint. I, I think we did, I did affirm that on behalf of the governing body at the beginning of this meeting, before I turned it over to Councilmember O'Sullivan, and he did issue an apology. If Mayor Raddus would like to jump in and say something as well, that would be fine. But, you know, I think we all take very seriously our role as council members representing all members of this community, regardless of political affiliation. And, you know, this, this one tweet in no way reflects our views on council. I think it's safe to say also, it does not reflect the mayor's views, but I will let her have an opportunity if she'd like to say something as well.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Kramer, for coming to the meeting. Yes, of course, I affirm and believe and respect every Republican, Democrat, Independent, and unregistered person in this city. And I work hard every single day to represent every single person in this town, whether they live here, or they work here, or they visit here. But, so thank you.
Okay, moving on, let's see. Go ahead, Mr. O'Dowd.
Uh, thank you very much. Like Doug, I've lived here for a long time and have never spoken.
Can I just ask you to state your full name and your address, please, for the clerk?
Sure, it's Blake O'Dowd, Ten Edge Wood Drive, Ward 1, Summit, New Jersey. So like the previous speaker, I've lived here a long time and have not spoken at a council meeting. I too felt compelled to speak after seeing Mr. O'Sullivan's tweets. And I did find it interesting and frankly somewhat hypocritical to hear a series of quotes in response to the theft of the yard signs. What I heard, and I wrote this down, is quote, "Part of living in a community is respecting other people's viewpoints." Quote, "Like someone is trying to intimidate you." Quote, "The essence of a democracy is that people get rights to express themselves." Quote, "This country is built on ideal that people of different political orientations get to express their views without fear." I would say that I don't always vote Republican, but when I do vote Republican, I have to say that Mr. O'Sullivan's tweet make me feel a little bit unsafe. And I literally feel unsafe to express Republican views after his tweet. And as a now minority in this town, I would hope that people understand that feeling. And I would question whether it's appropriate to have somebody with those views who apologized after people raised a ruckus, to have that person on council. And Mayor Raddus, I would like to hear your views on that, please.
Go ahead, Nora.
Thank you, Mr. O'Dowd, for joining us tonight. Mr. O'Sullivan made a mistake. He's apologized for his mistake. He's a duly elected member of council and has done nothing that would warrant not being a member of council. And I hope you will accept his apology. We all make mistakes. I don't know anyone who's lived a mistake-proof life. And so I hope we move forward and have respect for all of us that we should have in the courage to express ourselves freely in this community. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Naidoo.
Oh, thank you, Council President. Since Mr. O'Dowd referenced my comments, let me just state for the record, and I think those who have seen me on council for five years, having served with a number of Republicans, I think know how I have acted as far as civility and the importance of civility in public discourse. So I don't think there's anything, and I don't know if Mr. O'Dowd somehow thought I was being hypocritical, because he used the word, he found it hypocritical, and I'm not quite sure. And I'd like actually, if he's still there, for him to answer whether he thinks I'm being a hypocrite. Because I think my Republican colleagues who have served with me through all these years would tell you that I have always tried, maybe not always agreed on every position, but always tried to act in a civil manner with folks.
I'd like to jump in here and just add that, you know, we have been a bipartisan council, I, you know, and we have always acted in a bipartisan manner for the benefit of this community. We all sit up here as volunteers, and we all sit up here with one goal in mind, and that's to improve, to make this community as good as it can be. We are all here because we care passionately about Summit. We are volunteering hours and hours of our time to do this. And, you know, we may disagree at times about how we get to a goal, but we all, you know, but we all have the same goal. And, you know, and I think you'll, if you watch the way we conduct ourselves on council, you'll see that things don't necessarily fall on partisan lines, nor have they for the past few years. And I think, you know, we don't operate as a partisan body. So I'm very disappointed to hear some of these comments from the public because this was one isolated tweet, and it doesn't bear out the rest of our record. And I'd just like to share that. And I think Councilmember Bowman, did you have your hand up?
I did. As, as the only Republican, elected Republican here, I probably shouldn't make some comments. First off, Danny, I appreciate you apologizing. However, I do wish you would have reached out to me at some time, and/or one of the other councilmen, because I did not receive any kind of comments from any of the elected officials here. There are, there have been comments that have been on both sides of the aisle, whether it's at the national level. There have been local comments about individuals who would not support local stores because that they were a supporter of one party. That is not what we do here. That's not local. We are here to support all businesses, whether you are Democrat, Republican, or independent. I do wish someone would have reached out to me at some time. I am the only Republican, and I do at times feel disrespected. That's all I have to say.
Well, Steve, I'm sorry that you, Councilmember Bowman, I'm sorry that you feel disrespected. I think we have, you know, we have tried to act as, you know, as one council and to include you in decision-making and include you in everything that we do. And I, you know, I'm sorry if you feel that way. Councilmember O'Sullivan, I'm going to throw it to you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the comments from Mr. Kramer and Mr. O'Dowd. Councilmember Bowman, you are absolutely correct. I should have reached out to you. I wish I had. It's, it can't go back now. And I wish I had, and all I can say is, it was a, it was an oversight. And I didn't mean any disrespect. As far as my tweet, I have to let my statement stand for itself. It is sincere. And I just hope everybody believes me. Thank you.
Okay, so does anyone else have anything to say on this matter? Otherwise, we're going to move on. We still have a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. Carl Lowshirt, go ahead.
Hi, Carl Lowshirt, 14 Lennox Road, Summit, New Jersey. Kind of an amend him to kind of what Mr. O'Dowd had said regarding, you know, as a Republican, kind of feeling that sometimes you don't feel as comfortable having a, just an open conversation as maybe as, you know, 15 years ago when I moved to Summit. I was very, very proud back in May, I forget if it was May or June, when there were Summit, a Summit student started a rally in support of systemic equality. One of my proudest moments as a Summit person to see the community come together, the pictures, the photographs. It was, it was really important to me, and I thought it was an important moment. However, I did hear after the fact that there were several people that were allowed to speak, who were elected officials and some who weren't. Now, maybe I heard it wrong, but I'd like to go on the record and find out what Democratic elected officials spoke at that event and what Republican elected officials spoke at that event?
I, I believe our congressman, Congressman Malinowski spoke. And I believe that Mayor Raddus spoke as our mayor.
That's great. I think that's.
And those are appropriate, and beyond that, it was just our police chief, Andrew Bartolotti. So there were no, it was not a campaign matter. It was the, you know, our elected congressman and our elected mayor.
Did any, did any other representatives from our district or in the state level ask? ask to speak? And if so, or not even speak to attend? And if so, were they given that opportunity?
We did not organize this. This was organized by students. We were not, you know, while we were involved with, and not even we as council, the police were involved with making sure that it was safe. There was no other involvement of the city or any electeds.
Yeah, I, I just want to go on the record and say I thought the event was incredible. And I'm very proud to be a, a member of Summit. But I did want to get on the record who, which political parties were able to speak at the event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lowshirt. And I agree with you. It was a great event. And, and I'm very pleased to see that we have been able to successfully, you know, have safe protests that are productive and, you know, observing all the safety requirements as well. I think it was a real testament to our community, to our, to the students who organized it and to our police as well. So thank you for your comment. And I'm going to move on. Now we have, um, uh, let's see, Miriam Zukoff is raising her hand again. Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to the, to what, uh, Councilmember Naidoo said, and please, I agree one about, about the stealing of the signs. I don't think it should be dismissed as a bunch of kids. I would actually be very surprised if it was children or teenagers who stole those signs because by my calculation, on-way drive alone, I believe at least 10 signs were stolen, which would require a car. And I completely agree with Councilmember Naidoo that this is really not something to be brushed off. It's really a problem. And I am very upset about it. And I just wanted to go on the record saying that.
Thank you, Ms. Zukoff. And I, I agree with your statements as well. Um, let's see, um, Ryan Felmit, go ahead. Mr. Felmit.
Hello. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm Ryan Felmit, 57 Madison Ave, resident of Ward 1. Um, I just had a couple of comments. First, Councilmember Naidoo, um, on your comments regarding democracy and the fundamentals and power of them here in Summit and, and obviously, excuse me, nationally, I'm kind of agree with you more. And I appreciate that. And also to Mayor Radist, I just wanted to say, you know, just with the stuff on COVID today and just in general throughout the pandemic, the stronger and stronger leadership that I've seen. And I thank you for your leadership as mayor of, of the city. But my primary comments today here are in relation to, um, Mr. O'Sullivan and, and from my perspective, perspective as a concerned citizen with a young family, young kids, but not really young in, in terms of advocacy in the community and across the state. We're involved in a lot of things, me, my wife, and, and, um, so I'd like, I felt compelled to make this statement just out of my own self, um, you know, awareness. Uh, so I'd like to make, say that we all have First Amendment rights, and anyone has the ability to disparage a group of people of political affiliation, religion, race, gender. And thankfully, many and most of us don't. I voted Democrat, Republican throughout my lifetime. Many folks in this city in New Jersey are widely considered moderate and NJ of purple state. Secondly, it's been mentioned now several times that it's about one tweet getting away. I don't agree that it was one tweet that you can go on the, you can check out his timeline now. It's a, it's a timeline chock full of rants about national politics, among many other things. I'm staring at one right now. It says the day after the summit, it was the day after the summit, social media policy was passed. And it says, "Remember Tom Keen will be voting for Trump, a man that thinks you're a sucker, a loser, and nobody. I can only deduce that Keen, Kane must be, think you're a sucker, a loser, or nobody." This one tweet was, was related to an entire political party, but the others are not far behind. It's, it's Abraham Rensel. It, I'm sorry, excuse me. "If Mr. Sullivan does not respect the fact that Summit has diversity of everything, including political affiliation, I question his ability to lead with integrity and inclusion, something that my family values, that my kids deserve, and I would guess many more." Something mentioned, someone mentioned they're disappointed with the public, and I would turn and say that I'm disappointed in these issues. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Felmit. Uh, let me just clarify that, first of all, the social media policy that we just passed is intended to give our, um, our Communications Officer the ability to remove from our city's social media channels any information that's misinformation, anything that's offensive to any protected class, be it race, sexual orientation, gender, um, things like that. Also, anything, you know, so a lot of what we're dealing with right now is a lot of misinformation that is being posted on our social media pages. Also, sometimes commercial speech, you know, someone trying to sell something. So for that reason, we needed a policy that allowed our social media officer, our, our Communications Officer to address this, these posts. And it's in an effort to be even, you know, to be even-handed in how we do it. So people understand what are the rules for what is allowed to be posted on social media channels and what, and what will not stay on the city's social media channel. So, um, just so you understand that, it in no way affects the ability of council members or any other elected official to, uh, to have political views on their own private social media pages. And I recognize that, you know, that there is a line and, you know, but it doesn't mean that when we become council members or any other elected official that we check our politics at the door. And we are free to have, we're free to endorse candidates. We are free to have opinions about candidates. And I think, I, I think when you say that, you know, I, I don't think it's quite fair to expect that anyone who volunteers to be a council member no longer we're politicians, we have political views. And I think if you look, I know I get probably 50 or 60 emails a day from politicians about their opinions of other politicians. And I happen to be both on Republican and Democratic mailing lists. And I get all kinds of emails disparaging politicians of the other party. So I think, you know, I think we should just keep that in mind when we're in the middle of a very heated election season. So if anyone else has anything they'd like to add, I'd be happy to let them do that. Okay, so are there any other comments? Uh, yes, two more. Mr. Felmit, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it. Just maybe for another time, if we could discuss the social media policy in a little bit more detail in terms of which, which, um, there's a lot of Summit-related groups on Facebook and Twitter, and I just see, this is just a constructive observation. People don't know where, where it applies. Summit, New Jersey Happenings, there's all these different PowerUp summits. I mean, where, I think we could talk about it some other time, but it would be nice.
I can clarify.
No, that'd be great.
I can clarify that for you quickly. So Summit, New Jersey Happenings. Yes, absolutely. That's why I'm responding to this. So Summit, New Jersey Happenings is an independent Facebook group created by just a resident. Um, there is nothing official about it. PowerUp is also a group of three residents who administer it. Again, just a group of people who set it up. I'm talking about the City of Summit's official Facebook page. The City of Summit also has a Twitter account, has an Instagram account, has a website. So those are the things where this is governed.
Got it. That's very, that's very helpful.
Am I forgetting any other social media channels? I think I got them all. Okay, all right. So I thought that helps.
There's a lot. I think that's why it's confusing to many, many of us.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. O'Dowd. Go ahead, Mr. O'Dowd.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, thank you for the chance to speak again. Um, I, I would just, um, and, and I appreciate what you had to say. I would just draw a distinction between expressing one's political views, as you said, which to me is something like, "I like Joe Biden because," or, you know, "I like Trump because." Uh, and, and, and a tweet that is clearly, in my opinion, meant to intimidate by, by, by smearing with a very broad brush, literally, anyone who is Republican votes for Republicans. And the implication was that those people are part of a cult and stupid. And to me, that is not expressing political views. It's an intent to intimidate. And so I draw a clear distinction between those two things.
And I do as well, Mr. O'Dowd. What I was distinguishing was the other tweets that Mr. Felmit is referring to. No one is disputing that, and Mr. O'Sullivan himself has, is not disputing that that one crossed the line, and he has apologized for it. And I think, you know, I think we need to all remember that none of us has, I think everyone here, you know, in the audience and all of us sitting up here, we've all made mistakes. And Mr. O'Sullivan made a mistake. Councilmember O'Sullivan made a mistake. He's apologized for it. And now we have a lot of city business still to attend to. So I would ask that we move along to that. And I appreciate all of your comments this evening. So Ms. Herhold, go ahead and one last one.
Hi, Amy Herhold, again, 33 Wade. And I just wanted to comment in listening to this, that there's, you know, there's certainly a lot of challenges in the political environment. But I, I was just reflecting on, I think, what I've been very impressed with, what Summit has done over the last several, over the summer and over the last several months. My kids are in high school and middle school. And I've just been really impressed with how the school system has come together to address COVID, to make it safe, to make it work for my kids. And I'm extremely happy with how that is. And I just wanted to inject a comment here about some, some positive things that the city has done that are nonpartisan. And I realize that's a, you know, a different committee, but I wanted to just share those thoughts because I think there are good things happening as well. And I'm really happy with, with how the school system has been handling it.
Thank you, Ms. Herhold. And I agree with you. I think that, you know, we've had a lot of successes with, uh, with the city, with, um, with the reopening of the schools. We've had a lot of successes in our, you know, in our city with our reopening of businesses. There's been a lot of work put in by a lot of people. You're looking at a lot of, all the people sitting up here have done a tremendous amount of work since COVID hit. It's been for all of us, you know, a, a full-time job or another full-time job dealing with, uh, you know, how to safely deliver the services that our residents depend on. So I, you know, I want to commend everyone for the hard work that they've done and in the support of it as well. All right, so with that, I don't see any other residents who have comments. So we're going to close the public comment period, and we're moving on to ordinances for hearing. So Madam Clerk, I believe we have an ordinance for hearing. Could you please read it?
Yes. Uh, ordinance number 20-3222, and ordinance amending the code, Chapter 4, General Licensing, 4-220, Regulating of Sidewalk Cafes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. Long labor, the ordinance amending the code. Uh, there are many days in December through March that we can, we would like to sit outside and have a coffee, lunch, maybe even dinner. In our prior ordinance, we were not allowed to do that. We were only allowed to do it till the end of November and picking up again in March. What we are doing with this ordinance is making the, uh, street cafes available all across town, all 12 months out of the year. That allows people to enjoy the, the warmth of in, in January and the like. Additionally, the ordinance allows for, uh, us to have a rate across all tables, number of tables and number of seats, as well as expectations of any restaurant that has outdoor seating, what would be expected in, uh, to maintain it in a clear, clean and healthy manner. I move, we, what do we do? Hear this ordinance.
I second it.
Okay, um, so, uh, let's see, um.
Any comments?
All right, does any, right, comments? After all the public comment, I'm forgetting where I am. Okay, go ahead. Does anyone have any, any member of council have any comments on this ordinance? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President, and, and thank you, Councilman Bowman. Um, one, one piece of that that I just wanted to make sure that we pointed out was very deliberate was the, um, change in the pricing structure that was usually based on the number of seats inside the restaurant versus the number of seats that would be outside. It's now just a fee that's going to be much lower, uh, that's based on the number of tables and chairs. And that was done very deliberately to help the businesses and make sure that this was going to be helpful, um, and to make sure that, you know, that was not revenue that the city would have been expecting anyway. And so it was a very easy decision to make sure that that was done. So I just wanted to point that out. And again, good work to everybody on this.
Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Little? Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Bowman, for, um, making these changes. I think they're very welcome. I, I've heard from so many residents during this period that they really appreciate our dining and the feel of Summit and that, um, they really hope that we continue these kind of measures into the future, even after COVID. And anything that we can do to support our local businesses that have, you know, really been hit hard, and our restaurants, I think, is a welcome measure. So I'm enthusiastically in support of this change. And thank you for, um, putting it through the committee. This is well, well done.
Any other comments from members of council? I think, um, I'd like to echo those, uh, those comments. I think this is a great, this is something we've been talking about for a number of years, and I think it's great that it's finally happening. I think we, anything we can do to help the businesses succeed, and the outdoor dining has really been a very, very positive thing for our community. I think we've gotten a lot of, I've, I've actually seen a lot of things from friends in neighboring towns posting, "Why can't we be like Summit and have the same kind of outdoor dining?" So it's really turned our downtown into something, uh, that, that's an attraction. So, um, I'm glad that we're doing this, and I'm glad that we were able to, to come up with the funding structure that was much simpler rather than doing a square footage rental fee. These, uh, this number of seats is a much more, it's an easier way for, for restaurants to know what the costs are going to be. And it's also, it does bring the price down as well. Because our goal right now, um, is to make sure that the businesses are successful. So if there are no other comments from the public or from the council, I'm going to ask if there are any members of the public who have any comments on this. Okay, so seeing none, any, any further comments from council? Okay, um, so, uh, then I'm going to close the hearing and we'll move on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes, ordinance, ordinance number 20-3222, and ordinance amending the code, Chapter 4, General Licensing, 4-20, Regulating of Sidewalk Cafes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Bowman?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As we just discussed, this ordinance is, uh, as we just discussed, I move we, uh, have this ordinance for final consideration.
I second it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, the, um, the ordinance passes. Uh, motion carries. Uh, so moving on, we have an ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk, could you please read that ordinance?
Yes. ID 7362, an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 35 of the General Code of the City of Summit to establish the 2020 Development Regulations Ordinance.
Okay, Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. Um, this ordinance, um, although it is, the title is repeal and replace, is really a revision, um, although, um, in many places of the DRO that we passed in December of this year. As you, those of you on council and many of the public will remember, the Planning Board had spent a great deal of time and effort to completely revamp our, um, DRO, which is our zoning ordinances. And we passed those revisions, um, in December. Since that time, um, the Pla, Subcommittee, which consisted of myself, Jay Brinkerhoff and Bill Anderson from the Planning Board, as well as Krista Anderson from the city, and Tom Behrens from our planning consultant, have gone through each section of the new DRO to just make sure that, um, we corrected any, um, any confusing language, make sure the different sections matched up with each other, that there weren't any, um, times where language was repeated and, you know, that everything was just completely edited to perfection. We knew that that had not been done at the time that we passed in December. We had some conversation about that, but we felt that passing it at that time, even about that, but we felt that passing it at that time, even though it wasn't perfect, would allow everyone to go forward with these new improved and greatly improved regulations, and that we would do the kind of cleanup work afterwards. So that's what we are back here now, doing it a repeal and replace, even though that sounds scary. It is not. It's just that there were so many small changes in some of the sections that were moved, and some other things that changed, pagination, indexing, that it made sense to repeal or replace the entire ordinance. There were a few more significant changes I just want to point out briefly, so that, because it is such a large document, I want to point out these more significant changes in advance of the hearing, two meetings from now, so that residents in the council can look at those changes and maybe comment if, if needed. They note, more noteworthy changes include an amendment to the city zoning map in the R10 zone, a definition of what a brewery is in the CRBD zone, and allowance of private social intellectual clubs in the CRBD zone of the first floor, and some other flexibility on outdoor dining, on private property, limitations of green roof, bonus incentives, and some revisions of building height calculations, and permitted driveway widths. So if anyone has any strong views on any of those topics that I just mentioned, then you can go and search in the DRO and look at the changes that were made. But otherwise, the changes are mainly clerical and make the document easier to read, and just buttoning everything down. So at this point, I would like to move this ordinance introduction.
I'll second.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. So just to clarify, the hearing on this ordinance will be on November 4th. So we'll be skipping a meeting, and then it'll be, I believe Wednesday, that's a Wednesday, I believe, because of Election Day. So, so it's the day after Election Day that we'll be hearing this, and that'll, go ahead, Council.
I'm sorry, the reason, I just want to explain the reason for that, is that this ordinance will go back to the Planning Board, to make sure that it comports with the master plan. So we take another vote in the Planning Board, and then it comes back to council. So it, it won't be heard at the next council meeting, but the meeting after that on November 4th. I should have mentioned that. Thank you.
And, right, and council, and the Planning Board will also be accepting public comment as well on the 26th of October. So there are two opportunities to comment, both at the Planning Board and then at our hearing on November 4th. So, okay, with that, we'll move on to, to resolutions. So we have a few resolutions for law and labor. Councilmember Bowman, would you like to start with the first one?
Sure, thank you, Council President. Resolution number, or ID number 7394 is to authorize execution of the settlement agreement between Morris Habitat for Humanity Project 146 Morris Avenue, also known as the Italian-American Club. Summit will be fortunate to have 12 Habitat units built at the old Italian-American Club. This will demonstrate Summit's commitment to affordable housing, a longstanding tradition. These units will be, have access off of Morris Avenue, which will be approved hopefully by Union County. The local community supports it. This plan has been a long time coming and demonstrates our commitment to affordable housing. I'm, this resolution.
I am overjoyed to second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you very much, Council President. I want to thank Michael and Matt, our attorney, for getting us to where we are. It's important to remember context for folks who don't know all the background. Many years ago, when Mike McChernan was council president, we were going through the affordable process, the affordable housing issue, came up with a plan. Part of that plan included getting housing in this area. There was issues dealing with the zoning board, but ultimately, there were people who didn't think the neighborhood wanted affordable housing. But the neighbors, I had met them multiple times, and I knew for a fact that they genuinely did were okay with affordable housing, provided there was access on Morris Avenue. This is a win-win situation. It's a win for affordable housing. It's a win for the neighborhood, and it's a win for getting, moving forward with what we need to do for compliance with our affordable housing plan. And so I strongly support this.
Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo Councilman Naidoo in thanking our city administrator and our city solicitor. I also just want to point out, this is my neighborhood. It's also my grandparents' neighborhood and where I grew up. So I was also in conversation with the residents. And the, the, the one thing is, of course, that the, the exit and entrance will be out to Morris Avenue. But as part of the settlement agreement, the city will also have the opportunity to build two more additional units than we were expecting. So that's another, another win to be added on to what Councilman Naidoo had mentioned. So thank you again to everyone. This is really, really very exciting. Thank you.
Any other comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Okay, so going back, and last call for council. All right. So thank you so much to our city administrator and to our attorney, and to all the people who worked so hard on this. This has been a long time coming. We've, this is going to be a great addition, you know. Affordable housing is something that we have been committed to, to doing, and this will be a positive addition to the neighborhood. And I'm so pleased that we were able to come up with a solution that allowed us to meet the needs of the residents, but at the same time also get these units built, and even to get two more units. So I think this is a settlement that's well, that's well worth entering into, and I'm, I'm very pleased. So with that, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on, Councilmember Bowman to Law and Labor 2.
Law and Labor 2, ID number 7373, is to authorize the execution of an agreement with Teamsters Local 469, January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2023. Our Public Workers' Department, our employees, are members of the Teamsters Union Local 469. The city and the union have agreed to these terms. It was a long negotiation process, probably extended, definitely is extended because of the current pandemic, but we came to an agreement. Basically, the quick numbers are, they will be getting 2% increases for the next two years, and then two and a quarter, the, two years after that, they'll also be getting $200 for work boots. I, I thank the negotiating team for doing this, and, and wish our Public Works employees to have a safe work environment. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Okay, last chance from members of council. Okay, so thank you again to, to our Law and Labor team, to our city administrator, Michael Rogers, and to our attorney, Matt Jacoby, for negotiating this. And it's always nice when we can check off another labor agreement without any, you know, with everything going smoothly. So it's, it's great that this is done, and we appreciate all your hard work. So with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So moving on, we have one more Law and Labor. Councilmember Bowman?
Law and Labor number 3, ID 7374, is to authorize extend sick leave with pay for a DCS employee. We have a DCS employee who's about to undergo some surgery, and he will be out with pay from December, or from October 12th through October 23rd. We wish him a speedy recovery. I move this resolution.
And I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so moving on, we have three Capital Projects and Community Services Resolutions. Councilmember Little, would you like to take the first one?
Thank you, Council President. The First Capital Projects Resolution is number 7372, with, which authorizes execution of a storm sewer easement agreement for 150 Broad Street. This is a property that was recently developed by developer properties 150 through 158 Broad Street. And part of the approval from the Summit Zoning Board that allowed them to construct five multifamily homes also gives us the opportunity to put in an easement there, so that we can have access to a storm sewer. There's quite a large storm sewer that runs through that property, and the city needs access in order to maintain it and to address any issues that come up with it. So I ask that we execute this agreement for a storm sewer easement at 150 Broad Street.
I second. Do I have a second? Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, the motion carries. Moving on to Capital Projects number 2. Councilmember Little? You're muted, Councilmember Little.
Sorry. Thank you, Council President. The Second Capital Projects Resolution is number 7294, which is to authorize online auction of unneeded city equipment and unneeded vehicles. This is something that we do annually. Any vehicles that are, have passed their life, the city, we, we do an auction to get back some of the value. In the past, I know that some people have questioned why we don't turn in some of those vehicles for, you know, as a trade-in on purchasing new vehicles. But we do most of our purchasing through a co-op purchase, so that doesn't allow for trade-ins. So this allows us to get some of that value back from those obsolete vehicles. This year, I think there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 vehicles that are going to be auctioned off. One of them is a fire truck, one a police truck, and the rest are DVW trucks. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we have one last Capital Projects Resolution. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. The last Capital Projects Resolution is number 7386, which is to authorize use of Maple Street road closure by Kidville. So as you know, we've had a very successful, we've had a very successful project going forward with the closure of Maple Street and the use by the restaurants in the area. Now we have a business on Maple Street, which is requesting use of the area during the day, immediately adjacent to the area by Fiorino's. So Kidville would like to use that, and we are very much in favor of this, again, as a measure to support our businesses. And we ask that we approve this resolution for them to use that closed-off space as well during the day.
Second.
Um, so this is a resolution that allows Kidville to use this property, this area, when, when the restaurants are not serving meals, and to use it for kids' classes. And I believe most of them are arts and crafts and sensory-type classes that'll be on math outside. So it's, it's very consistent with the use of the space. And again, you know, in any, we, we are looking for opportunities to help businesses any way we can. And I think this is a really good fit. And I'm, I'm very pleased that Fiorino and Kidville were able to work together to make this, to make this work out for both of their businesses. And I support this. Does anyone else?
That's correct. And I would, I did want to say that Fiorino was in support of this as well. That's great. And we are looking for any opportunities we can to help our businesses.
Are there any other comments from any other members of council? Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So that concludes our resolutions, and now we're on to our consent agenda. So the consent agenda is considered and voted upon as a whole unless there are any comments from members of council about any individual, or members of the public about any individual item on the consent agenda. So if anyone has anything, please speak up now, otherwise we're going to, I'll call for a motion on the consent agenda. Okay, any comments, or any, do I have a motion to, for the consent agenda? To approve it?
Second.
And, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Now we're moved, we're moving on to council members' comments or new business. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to speak about at this time? Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to say, and you've referenced this, the free market is opening this, this Saturday. The permanent, finally Summit Free Market Building will be, the ribbon cutting is on Friday at 4:00 PM, and I hope to see all of you guys there. It is a project that, believe it or not, started in 2013. I can't believe it's taken us this long to get where we are, but we're really, really proud and happy. And I would have come off the dais, if there was a dais, to be able to give this. Since I can't, I'll say it, hope to see everyone there, and thank the city, and, you know, the mayor, and the city staff, and Michael, and Paul, and Aaron, and all, everybody that's worked behind the scenes, and Amy especially, behind the scenes in getting this done from the city side, but also the conservancy side, and all the residents who've contributed in order to get this building done, the first of its kind in the state of New Jersey, a free market building, so that for Summit residents only to be able to share goods. So it's quite an achievement.
I, I agree heartily. I think it's, this has been something that's been a long time coming, and it's been a huge effort on the parts of a lot of people. And I want to say a huge thank you to everyone for the work that's been done on this. It's, it's been, you know, it doesn't seem like it would have been a complicated task, but it was extremely complicated, dealing with the county and the ownership of the land and green, you know, and green acres, and dealing with, you know, with the, the conditions of, on the ground, and all kinds of things. And, you know, it seems like an obstacle kept, you know, it was one obstacle after another that kept getting thrown in the paths of the folks working on this. But everyone stuck with it and got it done. And I think this is going to be a great thing for our community. So thank you to everyone who worked so hard on it. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? It's Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to reiterate our mayor thanking the public for their responsiveness to the education that went out on wearing masks. I want to thank the Police Department for the positive reinforcement that they made with our young people, in terms of giving them the, the cards for wearing their masks. It worked. Our, our Health Officer, Megan Avalon, was saying that we had less, we had a better outcome with our, our school population. And so there's lots of fear ramping up now. So I want to make sure people know that wear your masks. It's making a difference. And to just keep up the good work, we've worked hard, and we want to make sure that we don't take steps back, and that when it does happen, when someone does get the, the infection, that there not be fear to report it for any kind of retribution. It is really important to do this, and so I just want to thank the public.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. I'd like to add also, in addition to the Police Department giving out the gift cards, there was, the gift cards were funded in part by the, by SDI, who donated money, as well as gift cards were funded in part by the, by SDI who donated money as well as, um, a resident, uh, uh, we have a high school student who started a GoFundMe page, so we were able to continue the program a little longer. So it's, as always in Summit, it's always a an effort, a group effort and we all work together. And I think it's, um, I think it is a great program and I'm happy to see that it is working. And we even made the national, or the local news a few times, so that's nice too. Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Bowman.
Since Mike McChernan's not here, I'm going to do a plug that he always does. And Friday night is cabaret night. If you guys have, you know, it's a, such an enjoyable night. It's going to be at the Green. I think that the weather is supposed to be outstanding, so music continues on the green on Friday night, so.
Nicely done, Steve. Nicely done. I can be proud of you.
Yep, and socially distant too, right?
Exactly. Bring your blankets and your lawn chairs.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Vartan, was that a, were you just, you were just?
No, no, just, uh, cheering on Councilman Bowman.
Okay, cool. All right, any other comments from members of council? Okay, well, seeing none, um, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, wait, we still need a second and a vote to adjourn.
Nora's ready to go.
She's ready to go.
I don't have to vote.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.